At seven thirty, I will call the meeting of Milton Common Council for August third, twenty twenty-one to order. And the first item on the agenda is the road call. Bill and Lloyd?
West?
Present.
Sullivan?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Ramsey?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
Coon?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Bazard?
Here, here.
All present.
Thank you. The next item is the public comments. We'll leave three minutes for speaker and we start with comment over.
Hello, thank you Mayor Gurdeep Bhar and all present, virtually or not. Happy part of this hybrid meeting. Consequences of climate change are growing. The frequently stated need that we have to get things happen within ten years to cut greenhouse gas emissions by fifty percent and and that challenge does not mean we can wait ten years and then start. We need to continue to build on what has been done and do what still needs to be done. And so I and others who are concerned about the climate, climate change and its consequences want to encourage the good steps Middleton is taking and support good ideas, ask where other good ideas disappeared to or help encourage them to get put back on the agenda and suggesting that we make sure that we are looking for ways to do things better with less fossil fuel and less greenhouse gas emissions for the city as a municipal operation and for the city as a community. So we need to adapt, we need to make changes to deal with the fact that climate change is already happening and extreme weather is unavoidable to an extent and we need to mitigate, we need to find ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and reduce climate change to avoid as much as possible of the consequences. So in that context, I want to express support and approval of the Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine, Supporting a Public Service Commission of Wisconsin Office of Energy Innovation Grant Application to Explore the Feasibility of Renewable Electric Microgrid to Serve Buildings in Middleton. That has benefits both for resilience and adaptation to consequences of climate change as well as by virtue of being renewable, you're leading to renewable energy, helping mitigate climate change. I also want to voice my support of having the city ensure that stormwater and infrastructure projects are developed and that those projects that are on the agenda for tonight, be sure to factor in the increasing number and intensity of extreme weather events, designing systems that meet the old historical standard of how many hundred-year floods when in the future what used to be a hundred-year, five-hundred-year flood is perhaps going to be a ten- or fifty-year flood calls us to adapt creatively and to find ways to protect our infrastructure by building to cope with the seriousness of the challenges that are going to happen. I'm wanting to ask and hope that there's some positive answer regarding the ARPA project proposals for technology and energy infrastructure. At the last common council meeting, there was reference to solar arrays at pumps number six and number eight with a promise that proposal would be included in the agenda for this common council meeting, August third, and regrettably, I was not able to find those details in the agenda.
Your time is up, please wrap up. Thank you.
Okay. And again, for the building projects, please make sure that we make them as clean and energy efficient with solar arrays and EV charging and the like because what we build now, we're going to be living with ten, twenty, thirty years from now and we can't build bad, we have to build better. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Who is next?
We had Kara Randall.
Okay, so the next one is please identify yourself and you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Kara Randall. I just identify myself, I've been a lifelong Middleton resident. I want to comment about the recent Rock the Ramp and Middleton Mori Airport. I live and have grown up two miles from the airport and have been thrilled by the airplanes flying over my house since I was little and just a few years ago, I've become involved in aviation and my first experience was at the Capital Flight Rock the Ramp event four years ago and I've been so pleased just to see the two operators on our Middleton Mori Airport just committed to safety in aviation, education in aviation, and also concern for the environment through Mori Airplane Company and Rock the Ramp with their charitable action. I went to the Rock the Ramp event, it was just, it was just phenomenal to see how Matt and Jade Ho felt and their staff, you know, prepared for every contingency, you know, having the fireworks, the, you know, honor flight for the veterans as their charity. It just, it was really moving to see that as part of, you know, Middleton, the good neighbor city, it was really creating an opportunity for families to come, there were non-aviators there, the children were oohing and aahing to see Mori Airplane Company work with Capital Flight and providing a safe environment and I just, I just can't reiterate how, you know, valuable and what an asset this airport is in our community and that we have such concern, companies that want to make sure that aviation is a viable part of our city and that it also provides other things like education and it's actually motivated me to, as a love of the Pheasant Branch Conservancy, to be able to do some work on the airport towards sustainability and maintaining the waterways. So it's just a collaborative thing and I just want to commend Matt and Jade and their entire staff for what they created for our community for Rock the Ramp.
Thank you Kara. Okay, so who is next Bill? Please raise your hand if you want to speak. I don't see any raised hands here. Do you have anyone?
I don't have anyone else on the list, is there anyone who has called in that would like to speak?
Anyone who is on the telephone would like to speak?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, go ahead, please identify yourself and you have three minutes.
I am Robert Bartholomew. As we know, a major point of friction between Middleton and the township is the airport frequent flights of patterns over heavily populated places and school areas. This problem will become much worse with any airport expansion. There is a relatively simple, safe and effective solution, which is implement a right-hand turn flight pattern, which brings the flights over agricultural lands. The right-hand turn pattern is an FAA-approved practice at seventeen Wisconsin airports done as a noise abatement procedure. Unfortunately, unfortunately, the frequent and daily overflights from Middleton Airport are not really working well as a noise abatement procedure. If implemented, all runways will be the right-hand turn to avoid conflicts, contrary to some public statements. One objection is a pilot sitting on the left side may have to look to the right, to beyond any airport obstructions to check for any planes on the right. But a right, left-hand turn requires the turning of one side to the left or one shoulder to check for any planes on the left side. Those situations are something we all experience when driving, particularly when changing lanes. Some may be uncomfortable with a new pattern, but a skilled and intelligent pilot who is able to fly a plane can be able to make the transition. A pilot flying from the Middleton Airport to one of the seventeen airports makes the adaptation, why not here? There will be multiple means by which pilots, both those familiar or not familiar with the airport, will be made aware of the specific pattern circumstances. Middleton has established itself as a, as progressive. Here's an opportunity to work cooperatively with the township to make a position, progressive, positive, progressive change as it does other projects and will want to do in the future. Some associated directly with the airport may resist this beneficial change because it is a change. If it is done safely and effectively at other airports, why not here? Thank you.
Thank you Robert. So the next one is Joel. Joel, go ahead, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you Joel.
Okay, fine, thank you very much. I, I really want to support Bob's comments he just made on the right-hand turn out of the airport. The FAA does not, does not mandate a left-hand turn. They say you can go left, right, or straight on. They favor a left-hand turn, but say that when there are obstructions or areas where you want to use noise abatement, then go straight or go right. You have to fit in with the community. And I don't think the airport understands that. I don't think they understand that they have to work within the community. I suggest that we start flying the planes to the right as soon as possible to take the noise off of all of the citizens that live around the city of Middleton. Take the noise to the city and see how many people, when the survey comes out, anywhere can support airport expansion. They will understand and hear the noise and then they will say, this is not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you Joel. Anyone else who may want to speak at this time, please raise your hand or if you're on the telephone, just call. Anyone? Bill, do you see anybody?
I don't see anyone else.
Okay, we don't see anyone with raised hands and we are going to, I'm going to close the public comments part of the meeting and we move on to the approval of the consent agenda and the motion to approve.
This is Robert, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
The second.
I give you a second.
Okay, any questions or comments or changes? Motion by Robert Burke and second by Roger Ramsey. Although the favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We are on to award of bid, course and professional services and item number one. This is update and possible direction on award of two bids to Nelson Ascrewing and Sons LLC for Pheasant Branch Streambank Stabilization Bidwork.
This is Mark, I'll move that we reject the bids and move forward with looking at rebidding at the end of twenty-two or twenty-four, or for twenty-three as recommended by finance.
Robert, I'd second the motion.
So the motion has been made, it has been seconded. Any questions or comments?
Yes, this, this is Susan. Mark, could you explain your concerns or the discussion because we couldn't hear it?
The issue is that we're not going to be, FEMA is not going to let us do this without an environmental assessment. And the earliest that we believe that we can get an environmental assessment is sometime in the middle of twenty-two. At this point, the bids have been out there for sixty days, so we need to act on it, right? And we don't think it's appropriate to try and string Nelson along with what they've quoted us, considering that we cannot move forward with any type of construction until FEMA agrees that everything is appropriate. At this point, it's looking like it's going to be sometime in twenty-two before FEMA will even, if everything goes right, it would be sometime in the middle of twenty-two if FEMA would approve everything. It's well outside the bid time, so we would have to go out to bid again. So at this point, if, if we think that FEMA or FEMA gives us some indication that they would approve in twenty-two, we can rebid it or more likely than not, it would be a twenty-three item.
Okay, I have one question and that's, we've got, in the next item, it's two projects, one is stream bank restoration, the other is trail. Both need FEMA's approval. Could they be separated? And I'm curious about how much it would cost us for the city to go ahead and do the stream bank stabilization without FEMA funds?
This is Sean. Susan, I don't know if, I don't know if I'm coming through or not.
Yes, you are Sean, go ahead.
Okay, so to answer your questions, Susan, it's really three projects. There are two creek projects, one south of Century and the other north of Century and the Trail and Bridges project, but FEMA pulled them all together because, you know, they're in the same area touching each other of Pheasant Branch and that's what I think triggered the need for an environmental assessment on their end. So it isn't possible to separate those. Your, your second question was about what's the cost of hiring a consultant to do the environmental assessment?
No, actually, it wasn't the cost of hiring a consultant, it would be the cost of the project without getting reimbursed by FEMA for the project.
Oh, the cost, the bid cost?
Yes.
If none of it gets reimbursed. Golly, I don't remember offhand. We didn't complete the bidding process for the Trail and Bridges project. We did open bids well and, and were trying hard to award them for the other two, the creek projects. I don't remember offhand what the total of those two was, absent the Trail and Bridges. So I can't answer that question offhand.
Okay. My big concern is just getting the creek restored before we have any more floods or whatever. I see that as the most important. The bridges can wait.
Okay.
Susan, I think we've discussed before and the concern is, is that if we move ahead unilaterally, we have no idea whether FEMA will ever reimburse us for this work.
Yeah, and that I'm aware of, I'm just wondering for the creek stream banks, how much FEMA would be reimbursing us for because so much of that was unconstructed and not eligible for FEMA funds?
Right, they haven't offered, oh, go ahead, sorry.
The sentiment of the council was that we wanted to do this with FEMA funds, right?
Right.
So I don't think that's changed. I, I understand your concern about corridor, but I don't think that the sentiment has changed that we want to do this with FEMA funds. And FEMA is looking at this thing as, in a holistic way, and kind of have to ride that horse as far as it'll take us.
So Susan, you do have a valid question and we had quite a bit of discussion on that even today, so, but it's too late to do that now. So I do have a few questions for Sean. Sean, did we, did you or somebody other on this app had a chance to talk with Nelson?
I haven't talked with Nelson, but I know that Aaron Steber, our consultant with Cardno, has been talking with them as we've been going through this process of trying to figure out contingencies that would work. They've been responsive in a favorable way to that. But, but this whole environmental assessment is fairly new to us, so I have not touched base with them about it yet.
Okay, so now we have two big grants, nine hundred thousand dollars from the county and six hundred thousand from DNR. I know the DNR agreed to let us use in twenty-twenty-two, do we know if they would agree to do in twenty-twenty-three and the same for the Dane County? Do we know, did anybody contact or do we have any information on that?
Aaron has been in contact with DNR staff. They did give us in writing that they would extend it through the end of calendar twenty-twenty-two. He asked if they would extend it to twenty-twenty-three, but he hasn't yet heard, or at least he hasn't passed it along to me yet if he did hear. He thinks that by the same logic that they were willing to extend it due to factors beyond our control, they would be willing to extend it further, but we do not have that in writing. I don't know about the county grant. What, what county grant is involved? I'm not familiar with that.
Oh, we have six hundred thousand, five hundred thousand and four hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand grants on the county.
This is Matt Amundson. The county grants are to address the, the trail and bridge project.
Okay, thanks.
So Matt, do we have a deadline while using that money?
My most recent conversation with the county is they want to see the area restored, they know the challenges we're dealing with in trying to coordinate a lot of moving parts.
Okay, thank you.
I have some information to answer your question from Alder West. I believe that because FEMA has linked the different projects of the two different sections of stream bank and the trails and bridges, if we move forward with work in that area, we're potentially jeopardizing funding for any of those three projects because they're all part of the Middleton environmental assessment process. And as far as the dollar amount we would be foregoing from FEMA, until they complete their review, we won't know for sure. But right now, their cost estimate for the Pheasant Branch Creek Streambank is a total cost of one point seven million and the federal share of that would be one point two million. We'll see what happens when we get the environmental assessment work done, but it's a large enough dollar amount that we didn't want to forego the potential for keeping that funding because of the large dollar amount because we're trying to pull money from multiple different sources to get all these parts.
Okay, thank you Bill, that was very helpful.
Okay, any other questions from all the members? Any other questions? Okay, if there are no questions, the motion is to reject the bid from Nelson. And I'll go in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. We are on to miscellaneous. Item number one, consideration and discussion of
Did we, did we lose Gurdeep?
It sounds like it.
Yes.
This is Mark, I'll recommend approval, recommended by finance.
I give you a second. So Bill or anybody else want to provide a short summary here?
I think of a, a short summary, so with FEMA's environmental assessment, we have two options. FEMA can hire a consultant to do the environmental assessment. If they go that route, they select a consultant, they manage the contract, they're paid for a hundred thousand. We also have the option that we could go out on our own, elect a consultant, hire them, pay the costs upfront, manage the contract, and then submit their report to FEMA or through FEMA's review. If we have an approved project at the end of that, we can then submit for reimbursement and would be potentially reimbursed for up to eighty-seven and a half percent of the cost, similar to reimbursement for the project. In discussing this at the staff level after the conference call with FEMA, our recommendation is that we let FEMA proceed with hiring the consultant for the environmental assessment that avoids the need for the city to upfront the funds for that process. FEMA is familiar with this, they know what they're looking for and hopefully it will help review questions on the back end if they have some involvement with the process rather than us going through all the work to prepare the report and then submitting it to FEMA and the funds for the questions to follow up at that time. Central downside of letting FEMA control of the contracts, however, given the timeline that we're talking about here, we think that it may be just as expeditions to let FEMA go through and do that and try to cut down on that review process.
Any questions for Bill? Okay, if there are no questions, the, although in favor of the motion to let the FEMA do the environmental assessment for the Pheasant Branch Creek Streambank Trail and Bridge Projects, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We are on to next item number two. This is the authorization to fill a vacant electrical inspector position.
This is Emily, I'll make the motion.
This is Robert, I'll second the motion, fill the vacant electrical inspector position.
Okay, motion by Roger Coon, second by Robert. Any questions or comments? So Bill or Brian, you want to say a few words, why we're doing it? You want to say a few words about this item?
We have the
Microphone please.
Oh, apologies. Our current electrical inspector and facility manager has left for another city and so that leaves us with a vacancy that will take place very soon. This is simply an authorization to go out and search, select and replace that position with a new tenant.
Any questions or comments? Although in favor of the motion for the authorization to fill a vacant electrical inspector position, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. We are on to item number three. This is the discussion and consideration concerning the city's pandemic response, yeah?
Yeah, I can start the discussion here. Following the updated guidance from the CDC and Public Health Madison Dane County that came out last week, we had a discussion at our staff meeting and also discussion with the city administrator Matt Davis, Brian, myself, Larry Beckler and Joe Morgan, our personal attorney. We have decided as a staff and allies that the administrator has put in place a mask requirement for employees. We felt that was appropriate given the recommendations that masks be worn indoors for both vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals. Since the memo came out before the package, Dane County has now moved to an area of substantial transmission. So for that reason as well, we feel it's appropriate to have a requirement for masks for employees. At this time, we don't have a mask requirement in place for other visitors of city facilities. I strongly recommend it, but that is not something that's required. We want to put on the agenda for discussion by the council in any direction either related to masks, pandemic response, as well as the discussion about how we want to handle meetings, committee meetings or municipal council and plan mission meetings. Things are changing rapidly and this will probably be a standing item on agenda until the situation is fixed. We laid out some of the information on what other needs and response, but I just wanted to go set it up for discussion in council. We noted and city attorney Larry Beckler noted that there may be requirements that come down that we need to respond to, but we also thought, given the timeline or time flag between meetings, that we should both have a discussion about current situation and also if things change, what is the interest level of the council in response in this part?
Is there any discussion about bringing that into?
There was some discussion.
I think it was the information that came out, which is included in the updated memo of package of responses by the city of Madison and by Dane County. So I think that is a discussion. Part of the discussion today was that there is interest in going down that route. We need to make sure that we have appropriate policies in place restricting to issues that Brian was talking about. We would have to have ways to confidentially manage the information, assess information how we would support it. So it's not something that we would implement overnight, but we did start conversations on what would be involved in case there's interest or we would go to that level.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Or Bill or Emily?
I guess to follow up to that, you know if there's any, like, were they volunteering, were folks volunteering that they were getting it all along? Like, at my workplace, we knew a percent of people because they came up to their boss and asked for leave for the shot, because we were giving out admin leave to go, which was a choice. They got four hours, and then if they had a health issue, response, then they got some extra time. But that was obviously my workplace, not on my business workplace. Do you have a sense if, like, say, a quarter of people got it on the workforce, or maybe half?
I really do not. We did not have any systematic required or even recommended tracking mechanism for employees that chose to get the vaccine to report. At the department level, they may have a better sense of rough percentages, but even at the department level, other than potentially EMS and the police department, there isn't a track.
Yes, Katie, just so you know, we, I would say fifty or sixty percent, and we didn't see, and they stopped counting. They figured that they were hitting sort of that for immunity. So, and that way, we weren't requiring.
With this variant, though, I think we're supposed to hit it for the eighty.
Yep. Okay, other questions or comments, Robert?
If we go back to the virtual or all Zoom meetings, do we have to be under an emergency mandate to do that?
Well, my understanding is that we have that ability, the council has that ability if they choose to do that, and from the information I have seen from the public health municipalities, that's my understanding as well. We still have the emergency resolution in place for the city of Middleton that's never been formally suspended, and I believe that would give us the ability to return to that. Larry Beckler has been very involved in these discussions. I don't want to speak for him, so Larry, if you want to ask a comment on that question as well, that may be helpful.
Well, I, yes. It's clear that there may have been a time when we could have revoked the emergency declaration, but since we have not, we're in exactly the same position we've been in ever since it was declared. So we are under, I'm getting a terrible echo, but because we already have it, there isn't any reason for us to do anything separate at this time.
Okay, thank you, Larry. So, Robert, go ahead.
Susan, please, go ahead. Susan?
Okay. I would like to suggest that we go back to virtual meetings, especially with the increasing rate of infections, which is, I mean, we've gone from up to, I forgot, we're not at the highest level, we're at the next to the highest level. But that's happened within a day or so. And the reason I'm saying all virtual is this meeting tonight is so hard to hear, and it's very difficult. And if people are in council with masks on, it's hard to hear them. We've got all this background noise. It's just much more effective in person. And I would suggest we follow what the county is doing. I've talked to some, one of the supervisors, and they're not considering going back to anything other than virtual meetings until September.
Mrs. Susan, how do you, maybe those who are in favor, let's raise your hand that you think that is in favor of going virtual.
I couldn't hear that clearly.
Yeah, I mean, my comment is, is kind of addressed to what you were saying, Mr. Mayor, and Susan, I tend to agree. We are, it was looking hopeful a month ago, and we started saying, let's try this hybrid thing. It's looking less hopeful at this moment, that things are on the right direction. So I guess I, my, my personal thought, I'm going to raise my hand when we get around to taking a straw, a poll, straw vote to say what we'd like to do. I think, I think a virtual, going back to virtual meetings is, is a better solution at this time, given the facts that we're seeing right now.
But do we need to make a motion or just?
Really, not a voting thing. They're asking for a direction, so I think that be clear, if there was a motion, virtual. And I think the other part is that we, just as a reminder, that we would expect to follow Dane County Health's guidance on.
Right. I always allow people in the, want to watch meetings, right? Isn't that what we've been doing? Anybody who wanted to?
Like, like when we were doing Zoom meetings, people still could show up in the.
In video, I mean, voice or two, right?
No, this room at that time wasn't available.
Okay.
Could just participate by Zoom or by telephone.
Okay.
Well, I think the broader issue, so that's one thing about meetings, but I think the broader issue is, at some point, is some, is, is the city staff considering closing the city hall again, and closing some of the city buildings, like the senior center and the library? Or is that more of a Dane County?
I think the situation with facilities was closed previously with a response to the direction from the state of Public Health. At this point, as staff, we have not been discussing closing city facilities, and I think we're looking for correction from the council. If that's been the direction and a mandate from the state of Dane County, that's something we want to do, we want correction from the council. We felt that putting masks requirement in place for employees was something that could be done as intrinsically as a workplace rule, but going beyond that, we want policy direction from the council. But I think direction about meetings, if there's desire for personal meetings, that would be helpful, and if there would be interest in having a facility open, but a mask being required for the public, or central closing facility, we would want that direction from the council.
So here's the issue again, there's no enforcement mechanism for us, but we would really have to follow the county's rules, like the closing buildings and requiring masks, right? We can't give somebody any type of sanction for coming into the building without a mask. So unless Dane County is willing to take that step, I think it's foolhardy for the city to get involved in that.
I don't think there's any plan to close any building. Larry, what is, what would you say? Who has the authority if we, would, could city council decide to close the city hall or senior center or other buildings?
Well, I, I think, two things I want to say. First is the fact that this is going to be an agenda item at every common council meeting, because my assumption is that things will change. They may get better, they may get worse. And so we're, we're in a position where, at the staff level, we wanted to make sure that the council was always aware and had input into questions like this. However, in terms of closing buildings, I would think that ordinarily, that authority, in the case of a true emergency, would fall to the chief of police as the emergency government director, if it was an absolute emergency. If it was less than that, I think what the council ought to consider doing is to authorize staff to be able to make a decision immediately, rather than waiting to hold a common council meeting, to close. So for example, if we went from our current level to the most extreme level, I assume no one would be upset if we closed city facilities immediately. We're not going to stay open just because the council hasn't had a chance to meet. So I, that, I would, I would suggest that, that you delegate that decision to city staff, but with the right at every council meeting to change it.
Larry, this is Susan. I think you've got a really good idea. I would like to take it a step further for, basically, the rec programs, the senior center, and the library. For those programs where they're bringing in large numbers of people, they might want to think about discontinuing those, not closing the building, but when you're bringing thirty or forty people into a room for a couple of hours, that's not necessarily a safe thing to be doing.
Susan, the library, or the library board, I don't think we can dictate them that. Mark, you have something?
We can do the senior center and recreation.
Yeah, we can do the senior center, yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
My understanding is that we've already given that power to the city administrator under the current decorate, emergency declaration. Is that not true?
I believe it's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Because we don't really need to do anything like that.
Brian, were you going to say something?
I was. So discussions today, we absolutely, we have already established mask mandate for employees. We do not need state or county guidance or mandate to establish a separate mandate for visitors or customers or clients to city facilities. We can do that independently as a city. The question is, are you comfortable doing that without an overarching county or state mandate? But as, as a separate institution, you absolutely have the authority to either do that or delegate that to the city administrator to make that decision.
And how is that going to be enforced?
No punitive penalties, but if someone refuses to mask, much like an aircraft or a private business, they're asked to leave. The trouble is, yeah, what are the real teeth we have there? Are we going to wrestle them to the floor? I certainly hope not. But most people typically comply and support the request. It won't be altered.
I think that's a good thought.
Can I ask if, have you?
Katie and Emily have been paid.
Thanks. Can I ask if, if people have started wearing masks in the building, the customers? And I say that because when I've gone to grocery stores in the last week, almost nobody was wearing them a week ago, and over the course of a week, whenever I've hopped into stores, it's almost, it's almost half, if not three fourths. Is that kind of comparable?
Yes, we have seen an increase in mask wearing. I've been to the library a number of times this week to work with library staff. Customers at the library are oftentimes wearing masks, particularly children. Here at city hall, as soon as staff began wearing masks, clients coming in typically will pull a mask out and put it on. So we have seen a follow leader, follow the example path that you're describing up to this point, without directing it. So I don't think that directing it forward, but definitely.
The only thing I was going to mention is that I saw Dr. Fauci on television today, and he was saying he didn't see an entire shutdown of the country like we had a year and a half ago, because so many of us are vaccinated. But he said, of course, this is all changing, and, you know, a new mutation may make that all different. So just to, you know, say, hope is not lost, we're not going straight back to where we were, but I like giving the authority to different entities so they can make the choice.
Anyone else, Robert?
I would like to make up an actual motion to say, let's go back into virtual meetings for the, you know, the near future, and that'd be, that'd be my motion.
This is Susan L. Second.
Okay, thank you, Susan.
And the question, the only question there is, right now, I guess I'm speaking for common council, the discussion maybe for this is, how does that trickle down to other committees? Do we go fully virtual, do all committees go fully virtual, do we leave that up to, okay, we, we, we all go fully, okay, that was my motion.
Yeah, and I will agree.
This was only planned commission at the city. Any further questions or comments? I'll go in favor of the motion to have the land commission and the other committee meetings virtual.
So that's not his motion. His motion was for all committees.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, let's just make it clear, this is for all committees.
Common council.
We're, we're starting, starting after, starting after tonight or as soon as reasonably feasible, these meetings go virtual.
I'll go in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 So that's the aye, okay, all right. Okay, we are on to.
The second motion is, is, that needs to happen here, is that, to iterate, that the city should follow Dane County recommendations.
Yes.
Okay, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further question or comments?
As, as a follow-up comment, if we're following Dane County, are you giving authority to anybody to make that decision when we're not in council, like to the?
Mike Davis already has an authority.
You're right, I apologize. Thank you.
Okay, any other further question or comments? All those in favor of the motion to follow the Dane County guideline, say aye.
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 Two hundredths of clarification, so currently, my understanding is that Dane County is strongly recommending that now requiring masks for visitors. Is that the council in charge of that, through that motion?
I still love that.
If, if, interrupt, my, my sense has been, it's not the action of the county board that we're following, but rather the medical advice issued by Madison Dane County Department of Public Health and the CDC.
So that's what your motion, my.
Yes, it was, so the Dane County Public Health.
Bill, motion of the public health, Dane County Public Health guidelines, okay. Any other questions or comments with respect to this item? We move on to item number four.
Was there anything else we missed that city staff is worried about?
No, if anything else that needs action tonight, as Larry indicated, the intent is to have this item as a standing item on the. Yes, it was. So the Dane County Public Health.
Motion about the public health, Dane County Public Health guidelines. Okay. Any other questions or comments with respect to this item? We move on to item number four.
Was there anything else we missed that city staff is worried about?
No, if anything else that needs action tonight, as Larry indicated, the intent is to have this item as a pending item on the agenda, so if the situation changes, we can do another update and discuss anything appropriate at the next meeting.
And we would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, item number four, American Rescue Plan Funding Options, Concepts for Stormwater Infrastructure Projects.
If I could just get started, if you would like. So included in the packet is a list of potential stormwater infrastructure projects that staff yields could be eligible for funding under the...
Bill, you are very difficult to hear.
I'll move closer to the microphone.
Included in the packet is a list of potential stormwater infrastructure projects that staff yields could be eligible for funding under the American Rescue Plan Fund. As we did with other items tonight, we just want to provide this for informational purposes and get any initial reactions. We are trying to look at all of the available potential projects and uses of ARPA funding. The intent is that we would be running ARPA-funded projects through our budget process, which would give the ability to weigh in and prioritize individual projects. But the list included in your packet identifies projects in priority order, and part of the consideration was looking at projects that would address a need in the community that don't have a strong alternative funding source, such as Tiff district funding, or the types of projects that have been supported by stormwater utility. So there's no action required tonight, but if there's any feedback on the project list, we can take that and incorporate that as we work on the budget process.
Does anybody have any questions? Please, raise your hands. Go ahead, Mark.
In finance, we brought up the fact that there, what seems to be missing here are efficiency projects that could be potentially brought forward by the water utility. And it was just a reminder that, to the extent that we can take costs out of the utility, that's really a tax savings to our constituents, so that, you know, as we come to make decisions about these, I think we should look favorably on projects that take expense out of city finances here, right? So any place that we can save money, especially at a utility, is a tax cut to our citizens.
And Mark, to make sure I understand, not exactly an example, but what you're saying is, a one-time capital expense to recoup ongoing savings for many years to come, is that a reasonable...
For example, right, if we could switch out pump systems out of the water utility that were more efficient, right, we would save electricity, so as an ongoing expense, they would be lower, right? So if it just took, so as an example, I'm sure some of the pumping systems that we have are quite dated. If we upgraded them to current technology, theoretically, they're more efficient, and we would derive savings from them, from the operation of them. That's a tax cut to our citizens, and we should look favorably on those kinds of projects.
I think that makes a lot of sense. Thank you for that clarification.
Susan or Luke, you have any questions? Okay, and this is also, you know, provides you with something to think about, so, okay, we are going to move on to the ordinances.
Mr. Mayor, I request that we move this item until after the closed session, I think, every...
Okay. Is that okay with everyone else?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And let's go to the ordinances. This is the second reading. This is the rezoning from B3 to B2. This is Nicholas and 3207 Laurel Lane. This is the second reading now.
This is Susan, I recommend approval.
Need a second? Any questions or comments? This is actually an accident. Okay, if there are no questions or comments, this is the, all those in favor of the motion to approve the rezoning from B3 to B2 for Nicholas and 3207 Laurel Lane, say aye.
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 Okay, well, I didn't hear from Luke, so it's seven oh. Okay, we're on to resolutions. Resolution number one, item number one, resolution number 2021-39, supporting a public health commission or Wisconsin Office of Energy Innovation Grant application to explore the feasibility of renewable electricity microgrid to serve buildings in Milton.
This is Susan, I move approval.
Need a second?
Second.
So if you read that, this item is coming from the sustainability committee. Does anybody else want to add anything more? And this is simply an application. Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve the resolution number 2021-39, which is supporting the Public Health Commission or Wisconsin Office of Energy Innovation Grant Application, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Now Luke, you're there, right?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Now, how about for the last motion, did you vote as well?
Yes, I was in favor.
Okay, so the motion passes. We are going to move the item for the committee appointments. So the Griston, Erdman, Herman, to plan commission, and Kathy Harvey to sustainability committee, you need a motion to approve.
This is Emily, I'll make that motion.
This is Susan L. Second.
She can get it.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve the appointments of Griston, Erdman, Herman, to plan commission, and Kathy Harvey to sustainability committee, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay, indeed, a motion to go into closed session, and the reason we moved that item there is because they are somewhat related to what we're going to discuss in closed session. Okay, the motion to go into closed session.
This is Susan, I move to go into closed session.
I'll, I'll second. Yeah, her summary.
All those in favor of the motion to go into closed session, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
We still have three calling people online.
Well, the weather was nice today. Beautiful day in Milton.
And, well, we're still recording.
I do not envy you, by the way.
Would somebody open this door on this item?
So we are recording, and everyone has been read the document.
Is everybody ready? So we are going to discuss the, are we ready? So we're going to discuss the ordinances. This is the first reading. Final action may be taken upon approval of motion to suspend rules under section 1.07, Milton General ordinances. Item number one, rezoning from B3 to PDD, GIP, Bruce Company, redevelopment, multiple parcels.
This is Robert. I'd like to make a motion to defer this item, and I'll speak to that when we get to the comments section, or the discussion.
A second?
I'll second that.
Very much, Robert Fox, second by, under someone. Okay, Robert, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, you know, I had a Public Works meeting a week ago Monday, and I know that's not a lot of time for them to make changes or anything, but there's just so many questions I have about what they're saying the parkland will be, and there's, there's a GIP submittal staff comments document that's fourteen pages, and I keep going to the second to the last page, which is page thirteen of fourteen, and in Public Works, they said, they're willing to change this, they understand that all the stuff they showed in the park is just there for, to kind of give people an idea of what a park could look like, it's not indicative of what the park would have to have in it, that's really up to the city. But even just the layout of the outline of the park, has me asking questions. I mean, they're, what they're considering parkland is parking structures on the street. They're considering parkland a sidewalk that goes, you know, maybe like, I don't know, a hundred feet north of the rest of the park. They have a building that they're not donating to the park, it's called Phase Seven Building, that's in the center of the park with no access to it. And then they claim that the whole parkland, that their, you know, total park, or, sorry, total public land is five point one acres, or twenty-seven percent of the property, and there's just, I can't, I feel like I can't make an educated decision tonight without, you know, what I think of is reasonable assumptions, reasonable drawings of where, what is the property that they're suggesting donating to the city? And because of that, I feel like there's just a little more I want to see from the developers to clarify from my mind what it is that I'm voting on tonight. So that's why I made a motion to defer.
Thank you, Robert.
I would like to add that maybe it would be appropriate to request from the developer that they identify the specific parcels which they are proposing to dedicate as parkland, so that would help us out. So if they could enumerate what those are, and where they lay out on this, on these proposed drawings, I think it might help people better visualize what they are proposing, and help us understand, you know, just what they're trying to do.
I think that would be welcome.
I'd like to make an amendment to your motion, or see your motion to...
I, I'm not quite sure how to phrase it, so I will take your friendly amendment if our meeting minutes taker knows. Basically, I'm asking for, in addition to kind of a little detail about what exactly is being given to us for a park, and get rid of some of the weird assumptions, add in exactly what parcels are being, you know, proposed as dedicated to public, or, yeah, parkland. So hopefully, the note taker got that. So that's my amended motion. Do you accept my amendment? Okay.
Okay, so the next one is Luke, and then Susan West, and I know Terrence and Jake, I'm going to get to you, but first the city council, so, Luke, and then Susan.
Wonderful, thank you. So I don't necessarily disagree, Robert, but I think because this has now come up a couple of times, what I'm hopeful for, in addition to what perhaps you and Mark have outlined, if there are any other remaining questions, concerns, comments, what I want to be cognizant of is, you know, if the developer comes back in two weeks from now with the recommended, or the requested information pertaining to parkland, if there indeed is another question that we may have at that particular point. So as part of this discussion, and perhaps if there are any other remaining questions, we could even further amend your motion to ensure that we are asking for all of the information that we need to be able to make a firm decision two weeks from now.
Thank you, Luke. Robert or...
I'm okay with that, although that's a little bit of a vague ask of the developers to say, give me all the information I need to make my decision, because I don't know that they know what I need, because I don't always know what I need.
Totally. I'm saying, for what we know, and I'm asking, I'm not asking, this isn't an ask for the developer, I'm asking of the council. So if there are remaining concerns amongst the eight of us on the council, that we make those clear now, as part of this discussion, and in anticipation of this agenda item coming back up two weeks from now.
Sure. Um, I have an email already kind of started that I'd be happy to share with the developers, but it was mostly the parkland stuff. It did include something that we talked about in Public Works, which is the entryway to a parking lot for the whole property. Has, you know, it's, it looks like it's fifteen to twenty feet closer to Parmenter Streets than it currently is, and, you know, I know the developers saw that at Public Works and agreed they're going to look into that, but I would like to have some of that kind of stuff developed too, just to make sure that we understand the whole property, but, you know, a lot of my questions revolve mostly around the parkland.
Any other, Susan?
Yeah, I agree with both Luke and Robert, and I think it's really important that we get that entrance in front of the Bruce Company back to where it should be. They agreed to doing it at Public Works, but it would be nice to actually see it in the correct document.
Anyone else on the city council here? Anyone else from the city council? Susan, you still have your hand up?
No.
No, Terrence and Jake, it's really for the city council. If you have any clarification, either of you can take thirty seconds, but it is really for the city council discussion here right now. You can choose who wants to speak, but it would be very short, and if you have any clarification about the motion or anything else, very quickly.
Yeah, I just like to talk, so, I know, so we had went to the Conservancy Lands Committee, the Public Works, and the Parks and Rec Committee. We gathered all the feedback we could, that was over the course of last week and yesterday, and we worked with our architects throughout the course of that, and actually, based on your guys' input and those committees' input, we put together a plan to show you guys today. We didn't have time to submit it, obviously, just because of the short notice, but if I could share my screen here, I could show you...
But that gives you enough time to put together for the next meeting, right? Okay, any other questions or comments on the city council? The motion is to defer, and, Bill, you want to read those, what's in there? Everybody knows the motion.
I think, I think, Mayor, it'd be beneficial for the council to take a look at this, just because, I mean, we want feedback, so next time when we come back, hopefully, we can get approval. I mean, this is, you know, the Bruce Company is trying to move forward as quickly as they can to open up in time for their busy season. I would love to share our screen and the plans that we've worked on, so you guys can take a peek and give us feedback on them.
Yeah, and if there's any way, this is stuff from the, this is stuff from the Bruce Company, too. Love to get a quick chance to get some clarity and make some points.
Do you have any, do you have any questions or comments, or does your hand up is from last time?
Yeah, and this was just, I just wanted to a hundred percent pretend and put a bow on previously, that Robert was going to communicate, because you mentioned that most of your things, I just want to make sure that all... I just want to make sure that all of your concerns are going to be addressed in the email that you're sending to them within, can we say, within the next twenty-four hours?
Sure, it's already drafted, so I can do that.
Excellent.
Do you, you want, yes, Emily, you want to see anything, or...
Yeah, I would like to see, like, just for a minute or two, Jake, your updates, because I, I'm hearing a lot of concerns, so if you've already, if you've already done like eighty percent of it, I'd, I'd like to know that versus you're a little there.
Okay, so you...
Yeah.
And I think the feedback we got from the committees was beneficial, so you guys are looking at my screener now. Um, so just to start off, to answer Mark's question, um, the specific parcels that we would be dedicating for the parkland, uh, the, the entire area is going to be replatted, there'll be new lot lines, it's, it's hard to, you know, in our plan, there's a building right here, it crosses over lot line, so it's hard to tell you the specific parcels that will be dedicated, um, but it would be this general southern portion area, um, just to touch on that. And then to touch on, uh, what Robert had said, um, there was two main items that he brought up was, you know, the detail of the park. As you can see here, we've pretty much removed all the details of the park, and, and we wanted it to make it clear to everybody at the council that wasn't at those committee meetings, we were at, the, the park details that we had in there were just simply the, the city's plan that, uh, was drawn up by Van De Wall, and, and they gave that to us, and we had thrown it in there, um, basically to, um, mimic what the city had drawn up for the, for the parkland. You know, once it's dedicated, and the city buys a latitude graphics lot, the city can do with the park as they please, in, in terms of design. Um, so we took all that, uh, the designs, the paths, everything out of the park. As you can see, we did remove the, Robert, you're referring to lines of the parking stalls, and, and we had the parking stalls included just because they would be used by users of the park, and then we had this, um, path included as well, because, uh, if you remember, um, there was a bridge right here that connected the other side of the creek to the path that extends, you know, all the way east and all the way west, um, and we just wanted that to be an extension, this path to be an extension of the park, and hopefully make its way, um, down Laura Lane at some point, and we just cut it off right at the lot line. But, um, you see, there's public easements here, so, uh, for use by the public, uh, to use the park and to access the public dog walk. And then the other item Robert, you brought up, and that was addressed in Public Works, is where this, uh, drive aisle is to enter the Bruce Company. Um, so the, the, or based upon the plat, that drive aisle had to be seventy-five feet from Parmenter Road, and this is seventy-five feet from Parmenter Road, and it's also in the location of the current driveway to access into the Bruce Company. So we did make that modification, because there's no parking stalls here on the left, and we had to modify our building slightly, shrinking it, but that is the current location of the, um, Bruce Company drive aisle. And so these are, you know, it was, uh, I guess, a short timeframe from the committee meetings until now, but these are the changes we made. Um, you can see, uh, the parkland is four point six acres still, which is twenty-four percent of the site. These are the changes we made, and we'd love, you know, your feedback, and, and honestly, I think just because of the time crunch here, we would love approval tonight, um, if that's still possible, but, uh, I'd be open to answering any questions.
So Jake, it gives you time to work this whole thing out, since the one, two committee just met in the past two days, so I think, uh, does anybody have any quick questions or comments?
Yeah, this is Seth, it'd be great if, are you looking for the council mayor, or can I add something?
Well, please keep it short, it's really for the council. Yeah, go ahead, Jake, you have some really big comments.
This is just, it's such a challenging process, I appreciate everybody's patience, but this is crazy runaround back and forth of getting recommendations, giving guidance, trying to make any concessions and adjustments that were recommended and, and suggested by city, by the different... I've been in every single meeting, and I hear this just runaround, constant finger pointing, and that's the, a high challenge of us trying to come to some consensus and clarity of what's in the interest, or what's wanted or needed. We put things on there to try to, uh, give a better visibility of what we're doing from a park standpoint, and that with, with getting, us getting it from different parties, and now we're taking everything back off to try to appease, uh, what we have there and what we don't. This whole property, we run, the whole property, every square inch of this property, we run in our current operation, we have fuel pumps on here, we have a shop, we have a, a large fleet, we have a major, major operation outside of the store, it's actually a larger operation than the store. I think the store is a value add, and I think it will be a very good long-term opportunity and connection as an outdoor living, uh, business in Middleton, long-term. We want that, but we have to go through a major process in order to transition and split and do any variance from our retail garden center to our, the rest of our operation, between, y- y- you name it. This is a very, very extensive process after I just get approval from the council. So if I can't even get approval from the council, I don't even know if I can make this progression and move forward, I'm going to have to look at different options. I'm really struggling with making any progress here, because I'm constantly delayed and constantly getting finger pointed and right back to the same spot I started. So I'm sorry that I'm showing some frustration here, but I'm not getting any clarity on what next steps are.
Well, thank you, Seth. You can see the, all the committees, and the council, and the plant commission, they like the product, and, uh, there are things which need to be worked out, and, uh, the Public Works provided you the input, CLC provided you the input last night, PSC, and, uh, now, you know, the elders have made, uh, some things, some comments which need to be addressed, and, uh, it gives you two weeks, and, uh, you know, it should be, you should be able to handle it, so... Any other questions or comments from the city council? Any other questions or comments?
I'll just say, I, they did address a lot of the things I wanted to see, so I, I do appreciate that, uh, and thank you for sharing it with us tonight. Still a little confused, I'll just say, about the, um, the fact that the Phase Seven Building is still, there's a public easement there, but it's not even connected by the driveway, you know, the driveway belongs to the park, according to this, and the, and then there's the, the public easement of the parking spot over to the right-hand side, that if that's parkland, again, I guess I don't know whether it feels like somebody's telling me, well, you have to put something here, and I, I guess I want to understand from somebody, you know, whether, whether that's the city's decision of what to put there, because it's public land, or if there's something that, uh, has, you know, we're being constrained when we vote on our GIP, uh, whether I'm being constrained to say, oh, this, you, you guys agreed that there was going to be some public easement here on parkland, because I don't really understand the purpose of some of these public easements. So I can put that in my email as well, I'll, I can modify my email and get something out to you guys tomorrow.
We are getting to the finish line, and what were these staff when addressed these concerns, and we are there, so, and now, you know, Susan, you have your hand up, and Luke?
Uh, I guess I would just like it to show which land you have control of and which you don't, because you haven't bought the latitude graphics yet. And that's being shown as parkland, is that part of what you're dedicating?
Hey, can you flip back to the other slide and show the latitude graphics on there?
Yeah, the, the, well, we wouldn't be dedicating the latitude graphics, like, um, we're, we're not purchasing that, the, the city is purchasing the latitude graphics site.
So are you including that in the parkland dedication, uh, the number of acres?
Yes, because that is part, it's just listed as parkland, so that is part of the park, yeah. And what would happen is, because we have a building right here that takes an L shape like this, there would be a land swap, where we would give up this half of, you know, the Sampler Square site, and we would get a little bit of land, right, sorry, I can't outline it, but a little bit of land right here where the, the building juts out into latitude graphics.
Okay, I guess I'm just having trouble with the math in terms of where the, is it five acres of land you're dedicating to the park?
We have four point six acres of total public land. I don't know what we're dedicating, I, I think the reason that we've hit four point six acres is that based off working with staff in the Parks Committee and, and Matt Amison, we were asked to hit more than three acres of public land. Um, in terms of what we're, we're actually dedicating, the Bruce Company through the Sampler Square Lot and this one lot over here, I don't know that exact acreage, but the whole entire development in itself will be four point six acres of public park.
Okay, I would need a legal opinion on, does the latitude graphics, is that part of what they can dedicate to parkland? That would be a question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I think they're, they're, they're not saying that they're dedicating, they're saying that's parkland, but I think we, as the city council, uh, kind of want to have some of this stuff spelled out for us. It's like, what, what land do you own? What land do you want to swap if, if, if like the latitude graphics has land that you don't have, and you want to swap some property? We want some, some of this stuff spelled out, and then what portion of the public land? I, I get that it's four point five acres, it looks like, uh, or maybe four or six, like, it's really small, I can't tell. Um, but we would kind of like things spelled out for us, is what portion of that is land that Bruce Company is, 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 uh, dedicating, versus how much of this is assumed that latitude graphics property is dedicating to this? And, and, and what's the slot between those two properties, and, you know, the more, the more you spell this stuff out for us, the, the more we can get our heads around it, that's all.
That needs to be clearly spelled out. Larry, do you have anything to add or say, or is there any legal issues here? Larry Butler?
I do not.
Okay, and I, I guess, I, I don't want to end off on any type of a negative note, I mean, I will say, this is awesome, you've given me a lot of what I was asking for, but there's a few new questions that come up from what you're showing me, so I'll, I'll, I'll send you an email, and we can try to hammer out some of the last few things, so that hopefully there's fewer surprises, fewer needs for as much discussion at, at a future meeting, because, you know, some of this stuff gets hammered out in the interim, uh, by, by a, a back and forth, because, you know, I think that's the goal here, is to, to get this thing to, to move forward, we just need to understand what, what it is we're being shown, and sometimes it's just a little confusing to us.
Yeah, we all have the same goal, to make it successful. Luke?
Does it make sense, yeah, Robert, then, to, you know, because this is going to require two distinct readings, that we can run two parallel processes, one of which is an initial, uh, you know, reading, the first reading, which would then be in conjunction with the additional answers that you are seeking from the Bruce Company and the developer, so that we can make a firm decision, again, going back to the timing issue, two weeks from now?
Um, I, I'm, I'm not willing to change my motion tonight, I, I guess, I would say.
I think there's, you know, a lot of crap. The answer is, is that if we feel it's appropriate, we could waive a second reading, if all of our answers are quest, all of our questions are answered.
Fair.
I'm not thinking, I don't think we're there yet, I think we need to defer this, and then see what happens in two weeks.
Yeah, and Luke, you have a good point, but Mark has a good point, too, that, you know, it could be handled quickly if everything is, uh, answered, so. Any other questions or comments from the city council? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone post? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Need a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion, I'll second it.
All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Have a great evening, and the next meeting, remember, will be one for all.